Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Tuesday, April 18th, 2017. It's 2:51 PM at the Carabelle City Hall. I'd like to ask Commissioner Allen to please say the invitation and then we'll be placed to the plate.
Martha Hartman, we're going to be again today to ask your lessons on this wonderful city and on those of us who are very responsible to make the decision. He has a question on understanding your patience and your mighty work and your best for most of us. Yes, this is Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord and to His sake and to His glory. To remember God, to His presence, on earth and in heaven, with His wisdom, with His wisdom, with His special strength. Okay, we're just, this is a special meeting, so we're just gonna move right on into the agenda items, and we have Resolution 08-2017. And will Mr. Hartman read that, and then our City Clerk will explain it to us.
Resolution 08-2017, City Carabelle. Resolution, implement performance measures to achieve eligibility for community rating system. Whereas the City of Carabelle has been a National Flood Insurance NFIP participant in good standing since July 18, 1983, it seems to improve its flood resiliency by participating in the Community Rating System CRS. And whereas City of Carabelle has designated, has been designated a special flood hazard area on NFIP flood insurance maps that were adopted on February 5, 2014, and the City of Carabelle has a number of policies regarding this. And whereas the City of Carabelle has renewed and rededicated itself to meet all requirements for joining the NFIP that it adopted by Resolution when it first joined the voluntary NFIP. And whereas the City of Carabelle has been determined to be compliant by the Florida Division of Emergency Management for virtue of a Cav visit, which is Community Assistance Visit, that was closed on April, end of this month, which will be closed April 30th. And whereas the City of Carabelle has developed and is actively implementing performance measures to ensure that its floodway management program meets and exceeds the minimum requirements of the NFIP. And whereas it is the intent of this commission to participate in the CRS program and to strive to exceed the minimum NFIP requirements, Z. 1459, 60, and 65 of the National Flood Insurance Program Regulations, Title 44 of the Code of Federal Regulations, and by implementing the Florida's Unified Minimum CRS Credits, will act to adopt additional measures that may improve its CRS rating. Now therefore will be resolved that this commission hereby assures the state of Florida Division of Emergency Management, Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, that it will enact as necessary to maintain force those areas having flood or flood-related hazards adequate land use and flood lane regulations with effective enforcement provisions necessary to implement an NFIP compliant program and to implement the seven performance measures required to ensure consistency with the enhanced performance measures to participate in CRS program. As a reference and incorporated herein, that's the City of Carabelle Flood Lane Administrator and his or her associates with their responsibility, authority, and means to implement the following performance measures which are incorporated by reference and action. Number one, adopt a flood damage prevention ordinance based on the state model that is coordinated with the Florida Building Code. Number two, conduct annual inspections of development in SFHAs to be reported annually that addresses identified compliance issues to be resolved through enforcement and mitigation to the maximum extent possible. Number three, administer a flood zone permanent application for regulation, all development in SFHAs with procedures and checklist approved by state, regional, and region six. For, number, yeah, sorry, region four. Paragraph four, ensure accurate completion of all elevation certificates before vertical construction and prior to issuance of certificates of occupancy. Number five, annually disseminate eight letters to utility companies concerning tanks that must be elevated or anchored in new HBD2 requirements that must be elevated above the base flood elevation. Number six, administer substantial improvement damage determination procedures approved by state and region four staff and maintenance of permanent records of determinations. Number seven, provide D firms or links to D firms and elevation certificates on the City of Carabelle's website where feasible. The City of Carabelle also agrees to take such other official actions where reasonably necessary to clear out the objectives of this CRS program.
And Ms. Keisha, you want to give us just a little idea of what this is all about?
Well, basically, I mean, he went through the seven performance measures there, and we already do all these as part of the CRS, but we were suspended from the CRS. But we've, we already do all this, and most, all these, all these really fall onto me and Courtney as, as far as issuing permits and stuff. We do all this already, but we just don't have the official resolution to adopt it.
Okay, and then what about the adopt a flood damage prevention ordinance? Have we?
We've already done that. We did that in September of 2014, after the new mouse come out.
All right, and that was similar, same ordinance as the county has, I think?
Yes, it, it was a statewide one. They, they checked it before we could even adopt it.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I just want y'all to, I just wanted to note too, I am a certified floodway manager now, I passed my course.
Oh, you got your results?
I got, I got my results.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I understand it was a difficult exam, a three-hour exam.
Very, very tough exam, and talking to the people, it was their second, third time taking it, so I think just the years of experience, you know, helped me.
All right, very good. Do y'all have any questions from Ms. Keisha regarding this resolution? All right, then if not, does someone like to entertain a motion on this resolution?
I would like to have this 08-2017.
Okay, we have a motion back to Commissioner Mathis. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, and a second back to Commissioner Mathis, is there any more discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to old business, item number one, discussion and possible action concerning relocation to City Hall. So we had this on our last meeting, a regular city meeting, and we've had it on every meeting, I think, now for almost three years, and workshops, and at the last meeting, I did ask if there were any other proposals, and yes, Commissioner Allen said he had a proposal, but he wasn't ready. I'm, I'm wondering if he's ready now with the proposal.
I could do it, I'd like to go ahead and get it in the project list for the consideration.
I, I don't understand.
Okay, we had a limited list of projects that we're considering. This would be an addition that I left, I'd like to add it to the list, and that's the purchase of the Gulf State Bank building.
We, do we?
We're taking it out, I think, over here.
Kind of trying to think, we, we've spent years looking at different projects, and we've had our short project list, and we've kind of shortlisted a number of them, and at the same time, at the last meeting, I was directed to draft up a contract, I was to draft a contract as to Mrs. Bragton's property, and one of the, and we'll get into this, I guess we'll talk about that, but one of the things that this is quite important is one of the conditions of the contract would be that, which is mutually beneficial, but is that we're not gonna use her property for City Hall, and she does not want to sell it to us at the $50,000 price. So, just everybody needs to bear that in mind, and obviously, we're here today on discussing, yeah, relocation to City Hall, so certainly any alternatives. We're getting, which is kind of a good thing, but we're kind of moving it ahead after all these years, so now is the last, we're coming up on the last chances here to consider other projects before we start committing kind of effort, money towards specific pieces, so...
That's what I'm saying, that before we close it out, I would like to just take a serious look at the bank building.
Do we, this is me talking, not, not the Commissioner, do we have an ideal price? Because we investigated this before when we're talking about the...
I didn't talk about it, no.
Is that...
What is the price?
Um, the only way I can present this and make any intelligent sense out of it, and that's one of the requirements that a person is speaking, that there be no interruptions until the speaking is through. I should accept that, if you can accept that while I go through this.
Can we do that?
Sure.
Yeah, that's under one of your rules, and that is, I agree. I'll pass this down to you. 206 Highway 98 West includes former Gulf State Bank and the Cooks Insurance Buildings. And we had discussed this earlier, Mr. Formick was offering us a deal on the bank building only, he wanted to keep the others. Since he is no longer involved in this, and he's out of town and out of business, he wants to sell the entire property. The price that he's asking for this 9,594 square feet concrete steel building, 1.9 acres at $670,000. I have it up here that when he was purchased by FDIC to Deltona and sold it to him for $760,000, so this is approximately $90,000 less than what he paid for. At one of the meetings, he presented his utilities costing an average of $500 to $600 a month. And the building would include, the City Hall, that we could include in the building, the City Hall with walk-in vault, police department, the storage, secure data and evidence upstairs to rent out, paid parking lot, landscape yard, and parking floor up to 70 acres. The property, and you probably have seen this before, is outlined here, and he puts that whole thing on 98 Highway. Okay. So, did you, uh...
He's got a photo with the property, like an aerial photo, would y'all like to see that?
Nobody wants to see it, okay, fine. So it includes that entire area over to the parking lot by the library, and back up in there, it's a rather large area, as it says, 1.9 acres. Now, I would like to hear some advantages of it. First of all, summer's coming up. Our people in here don't have a place to be cool, air conditioning is down. If we go to anything else, and the time we get it done, you know, well, summer will be over, there's no timeframe that can cover it, this would be a time. There would be approximately no construction time to move into that building. There would be no need for an intermediate location, like we considered moving here while we do this, or building a few buildings that we're looking at. And we had also considered the possibility, and this became, of course, an idea from our CPA, that if we eliminate the demo cost, that would turn this $250,000 to $300,000, that'd be free money to be used in the purchase of the building. And in order to, for that to happen, we would want to find somebody that would be interested in either buying it, we could put it on, it's been suggested to put it up for auction. If we sold it for a dollar, we would be $250,000 ahead. Now, if we sold it to somebody that would be able to pay more for it, that's fine, but that would take it off our backs, and we would have no further obligation to it. And, and as, and I was talking to Officer Honey earlier, and he said, he thought it would be a great idea to use it as a training ground for police, and be sure city police, even neighboring counties to come in, use it as a simulated disaster drill, where they could go in and do, do all their police practicing, which they need to do. So the $67,000 cost in savings, which we've already discussed, of our utilities annually, would go a long way depending on any kind of mortgage payment. There's public meeting space for about 50 people in the middle of the building. It's a beautiful, impressive-looking building, right in the city, middle of town, easy to walk to, and for all of our local citizens that need an easy access to the City Hall, as opposed to going out further out, or further up, or further down, or whatever. And then there's plenty of space upstairs for rent or lease, or additional income. We adopt the possibility of maybe needing an escalator if we should take that building. However, Tamara, who is an expert in the ADA requirements, says that if people are not using the public, the public is not using the offices upstairs, we would not need to put in an elevator and go ahead and operate somewhere down the road if things change, and then that might be a thing we could look at. So there's plenty of space upstairs to either rent or lease, which also adds some additional income to help pay, pay our expenses. The reduced operating cost of cutting from $70,000 to $6,000 a year for using, for electricity, and if everything is in there wired, I think it'd only take just a little while for us to move our entire operation over there and be going to the most beautiful building in the, in the City of Carabelle. So, now there are other considerations, we would lose the $1,400 after lower tax. However, if we could replace this building with, put that on the market, then that would maybe bring that after lower taxes back, not quite as much as, I don't know if it'd get $14,000. And so, it's not a new building, but it's steel and concrete, and the export building rental income, and it's going great for industrial cost, how much we, well, this is the other thing about the Hexport Building, it's been suggested that we have had this employment requirement, and that has been the nemesis for two businesses that have not been able to make that requirement, and have had to, we've had to cure the lease for that. So if we could put it up on a rental basis, so a person comes in and operates the business and just pays the rent per month, if he doesn't pay the rent, he's out.
Okay, we're not discussing Hexport. We're not discussing the Hexport. Are we discussing the Hexport Department?
No, I beg your pardon, is there, I'm talking about the great Gulf State Bank building, and I'm still on that subject.
Okay, all right. I, I really want to hear about leasing the Hexport.
I'm not, I'm just presenting a scenario that if we leased that building, then we would have rental income from that, that would help pay our city expenses, that's my point of that. That's why I'm certainly in line with what I'm talking about. And so that's basically what I've got in mind. I, I think the world has passed, she's done a great job supporting the city, that we, with the clock, and it's been right here, the family down through the years, have been a part of Carabelle, but I personally feel like that moving that far out of town, when we have this easy access here, and if we take that property, then we have to build a building on it. We've already looked at the prices of building a new building. So that's why I suggest that we need to put this back on the list as a bona fide deal that we need to seriously look at. Now, Mr. Formick is out of town, he's building a place down in Fort Myers, he's not a part of us anymore, and the only objection that I can see to this process is the fact that his name is tied to it, with the prejudice and the things that we've said to him. Now, we've talked about maybe we could get a better deal. Frankly, I would not walk to him and ask for a better deal because of the way he's been treated in this, so that's, that's my proposal. Okay? Thank you for listening.
All right, and thank you.
Any questions, I'll be glad to have you.
I was about to ask, does anyone have questions for Commissioner Allen?
No questions, one, one thing just for everybody's consideration, Commissioner Allen had all the details on here, and just looking at it again, as we were, the aerials, is the main building is just as he says, the 9,250, 9,594 square feet, but it has a total of 14,622, and the Cook Insurance Building is an additional 3,500 square feet, so...
And that would be a part of this.
That's a part of this, so it's, it's a significant, there's a lot of property there.
And as a result of that, Officer Honey, Honey said that would be an excellent place for the police department, and they'd have all those rooms, and then from the side door, they'd have easy access to the main building with the vault and everything for storing them. And, and the main point is that would be ready to go in just a little while, we could move out there, we could have air conditioning, we could have heating, at a much lower cost, and the savings that we would have would be more than I think pay the mortgage cost. And I have a lot of people in this community that have suggested that, and are in support of it, and of course, we don't go by what the public says, we go by what is right, not the who's for this, or who's for that, or who screams, or hollers, or laments. It's what's right, and what would be best for the future of this city. And that building, even though it's been there for a while, it's steel and concrete, and it'll last, last, it'll last all of our lifetimes, I guarantee you.
Do we have any more questions, any questions for Commissioner Allen? I just wanted to ask Commissioner Allen, are these estimates that you have here to repair, renovation costs, 50 to 100,000 is needed, are those formal estimates from a contractor, can you guarantee those estimates?
For the, for this building?
No, for the, for the Gulf State Bank building.
Uh, yeah, that, no, that, that was an old figure that we used when I was doing this other thing here, that...
So we don't really have...
We don't know.
Okay.
But the main thing is, it wouldn't have to be done now, we could go in there and start operating and deal with it as we go, and it would not be an outlay of $150,000 just to get started.
And then, um...
We'd have the, the window out there, the people could drive by and drop their payments in, or make other settlement arrangements.
Um, okay, you know, in our purchase agreement with the school board, we're not obligated to demo this building, we're not obligated, so, you know, that's...
That's just a liability issue.
Uh, that was, and, and I'm sure Chief Honey has talked to all of us about the possibility of reaching the trainings and for other law enforcement in this area.
So there's $250,000 right there.
I'm, I'm not real sure that we want to get back into the landlord business and compete with other businesses that are trying to rent offices at this point in time, I'm not real sure we're in the landlord business, we could be in the landlord business right here, there's plenty of space.
Well, we have a doctor's office here, or did have a dentist's office in, in other weeks, but...
At the, so, but anyway, do y'all...
But they don't have to move it out there, I mean, that's a choice.
That building is old, that building is old. We gonna lose tax money if we purchase that building? I don't, I don't know how much taxes is a year on it, I haven't looked in a while.
It's $14,000, I have that under on the list.
A year?
A year.
That's a lot of money.
That's city and county, I just want to point that out, it's about $7,000 for the city.
Okay, that's a lot of money a year, that's almost, that is almost $100,000 a year. We're right at 80 something. That the count, that the city's gonna lose.
Which would be offset...
And ours may be that, ours may be more than that, ours may be a little more than $7,000.
A year.
A year.
And that would be more than offset by the savings on the utilities that we're paying here right now.
I just said, we could purchase a piece of land and build it a lot cheaper than that, and it'll be brand new.
Well, yeah, a state-of-the-art, purpose-specific building.
And it'll be built for City Hall, because just like he said, we don't have no purpose for the upstairs building.
Now, Commissioner Allen has requested it to go on the list of properties that we have, along with moving back home to City Hall, which would be the cheapest thing to do. And then using properties that we don't have to purchase would often be the next least expensive thing to do. So if you, if we, you know, if, if this doesn't work out with Ms. Bragton and, and her property, then I, I don't see, you know, problem with putting it back on the list, and we can, we can put it on the, we can put it on the list, and if necessary, we can, we can review, review it in time to come if we need another, another option. And I will tell you, the Courtney and I spent almost an hour with Jim Moore, the Senior Citizen Center President yesterday, and he wants to reopen this offer. So, you know, these folks are still, you know, there's a lot of folks out there that still want to make an offer, or want, want us to reconsider.
Jim Moore, thank you. And as I said, Pat, bless your heart, you're a good friend, you're a good neighbor, and I think it's a generous offer, and really appreciate that, but as I understand, the resolution that we were deciding was if we buy it, we will have to use it for City Hall, and, and I have no prob, if we buy it, that's all I would use it for. But I just think that under the circumstances, the distance from out of town, it's just not, you know, and everybody's downtown, it's not next to the post office, and, you know, every people would have easy access, plus the fact, beautiful building, Carabelle City Hall, I think it'd be a tourist attraction and a beautiful place to incorporate our city, plus the landscaping of that area, we've got the property there that we can do other little events on, and little city events, and parties, and picnics, and so on. I think it's a win-win situation.
All right, okay, so what you're requesting then is for it to go on the list?
Yes, that's all, I'm not asking for a decision, I'm just saying let's get it on the list.
Last, the last, all right, so, what, y'all, y'all agree we can put it on the list?
Yes, it definitely needs to be on the list, but I need to say this, we need to start chopping some of these options. We already done a few. To me, in my opinion, if we get down to two choices here, that's just Bragton property, and among Mr. Allen is suggesting that, that the old City Hall, that Senior Citizen, I just don't like the protection.
It's too small.
I think we down to two choices here.
All right.
But we need to know what it costs to build a brand-new building on this piece of property. Is it less than what Mr. Allen's quoted?
Now, the $670,000 is not what we're gonna pay for that. It has extensive work that needs to be done in both buildings. So you can, he's got 50 to 100,000, and that's just what he's saying.
We can count off of that.
The $670,000?
Sure, any piece of...
Oh, yeah, because I don't think he wanted that much, that much money.
Any piece of real estate, when somebody puts it on the market, you gotta buy or sell, make them negotiate the price.
Well, get negotiated, you're, you're welcome to it, and I'd be for that, if it'll happen.
But he's got investors that paid for that property, he didn't pay for it.
All right.
And he's selling, ain't he?
I think so, yeah.
We don't know those things, and, and we're here today now, we issued, so we're, we'll put that on the list, all right? Put it on the list for consideration. And we're here today to consider this contract. We, we issued, we voted on moving forward with purchasing property at the corner of Northeast 12th Street, Highway 98, and we gave a directive, a motion for it, to move forward on that property and have Mr. Hartman get with the owner there and draw up a contract, and we're here to take a look at that contract today and see if we want to move forward with that. So, Mr. Hartman, you want to talk to us a little bit about that, sir?
Sure, and Mrs. Bragton's here to answer any questions, or if I haven't gotten anything, we have not, because Bragton and I have not talked since she received copy of this, so she may have some questions and revisions of her own. The, the contract is simple, it's intended to memorialize what we had talked about at the last meeting, which was a purchase of the eight lots there at the corner of 98 and 12th Street, 12th Avenue, owned by Ms. Bragton, lots four through 11, and for a, purchased for a price of $50,000 to the city. What we've got here too, is that it shows on this contract a purchase price of $100,000, but that $50,000 of that will be donated to the city as far as the value of the property. So the city's cost is $50,000, as we discussed and agreed upon. The, kind of just running through things, the city would pay closing costs, so that the net, to Ms. Bragton, is $50,000, which has us paying closing costs, the...
The net donation.
The net donation would also be $50,000. And it's really the additional terms that we had discussed, is number one, obviously this contract is contingent upon the City Commission voting and approving it before we enter into it. The, that we recognize that a portion of the property is a donation, valued $50,000, and that the city would put something similar to the school board plaque out front, just recognizing that contribution by Ms. Bragton to, to the city. The, the, that, this is what we talked about earlier, that the sole purpose, basically that you would not sell this property to the city for $50,000 unless we use it for City Hall. And, and we had talked about different ways to make sure that that happens, and what I had put in there was simply that, that we would, as far as a closing date, instead of an actual date, that we would close, that, you know, move forward, close on the contract 30 days after we'd entered. on the contract thirty days after we'd entered into a contract for design construction of the city complex, so, once we've spent that money and inked a contract with engineer, um, and, and contractor, then we're committed to building city hall there, and then we can move ahead and close. So, that would, obviously, make sure that that intent or that, that contingency is satisfied, that we're using that property for city hall, and then, and then obviously it's contingent upon a appraisal, um, supporting our purchase of the property at fifty thousand dollars, that there's eight, that fifty eight lots, the city's not overpaying, um, for, for the property. And when I say that, it's, when I say here, I leave us, leave us some wiggle room, but it's essential that we can, I'm gonna say, we can't overpay for property, but we need to have an appraisal, we certainly want all the information, we wanna know, um, in a sense, an appraisal acceptable to the city, so if we come up a little bit short, or certainly over, um, it'll be up to the city to decide, hey, is it worth it to us because of the unique location of it or anything like that, so that'll be, um, up to the city, it doesn't, this is not a situation where, you know, the appraisal controls what we do, we just, we just want that information and it's due practice to get, we don't need an appraisal, so, you know, and that's, if anybody has any specific questions, certainly let me know, and then Ms. Bragton's here, um, she, she may have some, uh, question, provisions, anything like that to determine to that.
Uh, does anyone have questions? Of course, I've got a couple, um, and I just want to make sure I understand now, the city will not, uh, pay, uh, for this property until we have entered into agreement for construction of, of a, until we sign with a, a contractor to construct a new building. At that point, we, we will, uh, uh, then close this contract, this sales purchase contract with Ms. Bragton, and, 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 uh, pay, uh, fifty thousand dollars, that way, that would stop us from having to, to close the sales contract, say, in thirty days or whenever's normal, and not have to reimburse if we don't, uh.
Exactly, the, the, and, and Ms. Bragton's concern, we talked about it, is, there've been, we talked about this before, is that the city recognizes, um, we talked about different things, and I, I refer to the senior center, where they have a reversion provision in there, that it never stopped being used for the senior, the senior center ever ceases to exist, or it's not used in the senior center, it reverses back to the city, we talked about some of those ideas as far as having a reversion provision, but that's not, that would be difficult to do from a city perspective, I mean, the other way around, and I, obviously, I crafted that provision to implement her desire, basically, which is, I don't want to sell the property for fifty thousand dollars, because she, she strongly feels it's worth more, and it shows up as more on the property record, certainly, so the property, she's selling it at discount to the city, and she does not want to sell it at discount, and then have it just sit there, the city doesn't build, doesn't build a city hall.
I can understand that. So, there are additional terms here, has everyone reviewed these additional terms? Do we, do we know what, how we would like to move forward on this, is this something that, I mean, we've, we've been over this now for, like I said earlier, almost three years, uh, we've been over every property, uh, just for to allow us to build a new, uh, purpose, purpose-specific building that's built towards, uh, city hall, police department operations, not too much, uh, more, not more square footage than we need, a new building that, that should last forty or fifty years, uh, if we, if we can, if we can, uh, you know, make the building fit on that property, so, um.
Yeah, I, I would, I would make a motion to purchase it.
All right, uh, so, is that, is that correct, is that how?
Yeah, and, and really, two things, one would be that if you all would authorize, if, if the decision is, and I would say we want to vote on it, to move ahead, to enter into this contract, that, that you would say, hey, Courtney, City Administrator, City Administrator, that you authorize Courtney to sign this contract, or a, the contract with these provisions and this pricing, because Ms. Bragton has any issues with it, I'll certainly. Any material change, I'll bring back before you, but if it's just immaterial, then, you all would authorize Courtney to sign, sign the contract. Secondarily, from what Commissioner Allen talked about earlier, um, you know, you can look at this as, as positive from one perspective, but also, we're starting to narrow down towards, uh, destination here, and that is something that needs to be considered also, because once we go under contract, we will have contractual obligations to Ms. Bragton, and it will, in some ways, limit, you know, we're kinda headed towards building a new city hall at that location, and our list of alternatives, um, start falling away, so, just to understand that when you vote to. That's true, yeah.
Um, I want to say that, uh, I talked to, uh, the city administrator at Mexico Beach this morning for a good long time, and, um, sent him an email yesterday afternoon of all my questions, they're building a new city hall, they, uh, voted on that last November, um, and, but they had their site work had, had already been done, they had the, the land already, uh, picked out, the site work was done, uh, but they, um, uh, they purchased a design and a floor plan from an online company, and, uh, that made it less expensive instead of hiring an architect, but they did hire a professional to complete the, uh, R and B specs, and I don't know if we were to do something like that, would that be the attorney or the engineer, I don't know that you have specs, and then they advertised, and, uh, they got F and V builders from Port St. Joe, they, uh, the administrator and the purpose said they love F and V builders, it's been no problem, uh, but of course, we advertised, but the rest of the proposal, I don't know, we didn't get it, uh, but they broke ground the first of January, right after New Year's, and they're moving in next week, or in ten days, stick build, uh, four hundred sixty thousand, thirty-two hundred square feet, of course, we need more than thirty-two hundred square feet, uh, and we're having to invest for the, for the land, so, you know, there's gonna be, you know, it's gonna cost more than that, uh, certainly, but it kinda gives you an idea, uh, the Camp Gordon Johnston is a metal building, uh, four thousand square feet, but it's, it has like twenty foot, twenty-five foot ceiling, uh, and that's about three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty, three thousand for that building.
So, if we do purchase it, and it is, I, I don't think it'll be more than six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but even if it is, it's a brand-new building.
That's, that's where you have to take it into, uh, you know, you might, you might end up spending eight hundred thousand, or, or who knows, uh, but you have to take that into consideration, you've got something that's built purpose-specific for city hall operations, a brand-new building with, uh, communications like it needs to be, a security system, uh, in there, and, you know, just everything that you, that you need to operate.
There's been leakages, briefly, there've been problems, and all of that, uh, we'll say, they've been.
And Mexico Beach has been going around, uh, trying, you know, they've been through, through trials and tribulations for, for years, uh, over there, and they've been in this building, in that building, they've been in a bank building, they've been in an old house, they, and they finally, uh, decided to, to just go ahead and build something instead of doing, doing another option, so, I'm just, you know, reporting that to you, and, uh, so what we need, if we want to move forward, we would, uh, motion to authorize, uh, Courtney to sign this contract, but I just wanna make sure it won't close until we follow, we follow these additional terms of, uh, signing a contract with a contractor to construct, is that correct?
That's correct.
Does Ms. Bragton understand that? Do you have any, do you have anything you'd like to say, Ms. Bragton?
Uh, no, I just, I heard everything that I specifically asked, I was just, I'm a little confused because I thought this was already a done deal, you know, but, uh, it's okay.
Well, we just put, we put the, uh, you know, we've got the senior centers, we've got the city hall on the list, the old city hall, we've got the old water plant, uh, land on the list, the G USC in there, we've got the senior center, but that's not, that's not enough property there at the senior center, so, you know, it's on the list as an option if something doesn't work out. Do y'all agree with that?
Yes.
How I just interpreted that, okay.
Go with the contract, just, uh, just brag.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey to authorize Courtney to sign the sales purchase agreement, uh, with Ms. Pat Bragton, uh, for, uh, land to build a new city hall. Do we have a second also? Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Walton. Is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, Commissioner Walton, Commissioner, uh, Mathis, Commissioner Massey, Mayor Pat's all in favor, nay, Commissioner Allen, and the motion carries. Okay, then, I just wanted to follow up, uh, you know, we need to talk about a couple more things here on this item, Dan has a report, but I, I did want to mention, uh, you know, that, uh, we might find that we're having a little bit of a problem squeezing in on that property, and there's some additional property that borders that, uh, Ms. Bragton's property, owned by the CC Land Company, who owns four lots there, uh, immediately west to it, and one lot immediately north that joins it, and, uh, I'm, I'm ready today, right now, to talk to y'all about making CC Land Company an offer.
We, as, as you all know from the last meeting.
That's it right there.
That I own, my wife owns half of that, and it's a bunch of, it's, when I looked up Pat's property the other night, um, we, I say we purchased a whole bunch of property from St. Joe, and this was included in it, a big bulk lot of the sales.
This is it right there?
And. Obviously, I try to, I make balls, I, I don't, I don't, I would wanna look at the affidavit, I think it's not really appropriate, I don't want to miss.
But I, I can ask you to take them off of them, if the, if the commission agrees.
You certainly can, but you're recognizing that it's mine.
Yes, and that's what I would like to, I, I'm gonna talk to the commission about that now and ask them if they would consider taking CC Land Company in offer, and it was purchased, uh, last.
Purchased in April of sixteen.
Yes, April of sixteen, and there's a list of all of the properties that was purchased, and, uh, all the lots, it's like a whole bunch of lots, thirty-nine lots throughout the city.
And which one?
Uh, this is, uh, Ms. Bragton, and this one.
Uh-huh.
This, and then that one, uh, they also own this lot right here, uh, and then Franklin County owns that lot, we might need to approach Franklin County, but this would allow us to abandon that alleyway and, you know, have more, you know, adequate space, and this would allow us for parking, that north of the lot would allow us parking, and then we could abandon the alleyway, which one is offered, and. That's Ms. Bragton's, her purchase, her, that's just signed contract, first signed contract on that one, um.
I would, I, I'm sorry, we need to go more down, just to be, uh, Brett says, he is, I'll file another one of those, they, they, the forms where I was, I need to review myself because I can't provide it to the commission.
That's fine, we understand, and so, can you care, can you take this as an offer?
Of course I can.
As the attorney?
No, no, I need, I would need to stay out of it.
Can Courtney take them in offer?
Yes, she can contact me.
Now, look, um, I, uh, this is CC Land?
Yes, ma'am.
Just this?
And this one.
Okay, that's what I'm telling you, this is the one we're going into contract with, this is Brag.
Uh-huh, and this one, and this is four lots, one, two, three, four here, see how they are compared, and that's one lot, so it'd be five lots from CC Land, um, and they purchased all those lots for, uh, a, 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 a good price, a, a very good price, and, and the offer that I would have to them would, would be, it's, it's the same of, the appraised price on Pat Bragton's property was, uh, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred, and we, uh, agreed to purchase for fifty-six point three percent of that purchase price, but we can't do that on these lots because they, they bought them so, so inexpensive, almost through, but, uh, I'm prepared to, uh, the, the, uh, appraised price on these is twenty-four thousand, this is a bulk, these are two properties, they're appraised together at twenty-four thousand, and to offer them fifty-six point three percent of that, of, of property appraised price of twenty-four thousand, just like we, uh, Ms. Bragton, fifty-three point six percent, excuse me, fifty-six point three percent, fifty-six point three percent, uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, to, to Pat Bragton, and fifty-six point three percent of the property appraisers' value of twenty-three, twenty-four thousand would be ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so ten thousand, five hundred dollars for five lots.
Are you going to go?
Uh, but they could be used for stormwater, we're gonna have to have that, and the one on the north side can be used for parking.
Well, I make a motion for Courtney to contact CC Land Company with, uh, uh, option, uh, ten thousand, five hundred dollars. For the whole, for five lots.
Five lots. Okay, did you get that, Courtney, persuasion? All right, so that's a motion by Commissioner Massey, and then a second by Commissioner Mathis, uh, is there any discussion?
Can I hear the motion again, please?
Uh, Mathis, second.
Yes. I said I make a motion to, uh, for Courtney to contact CC Land Company, and offer them a price of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, okay.
Um, so, we're in a discussion. This would look good for the CC Land Company, we know they own more property in the city, uh, it would be similar, a similar style donation, I don't know if the contract would need to be similar to the contract that we have with Ms. Bragton, that, uh, you know, we, it, it might need to be, because it would be, it would be, uh, kind of like a similar donation, um, and it would help the city be able to move forward on, on, uh, really constructing and building and parking facilities, it might be.
That would be contingent on, go, getting the other deal worked out.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, the payment we don't miss.
Right. Do, do we understand that, um, y'all understand that would be contingent on?
Say, with Ms. Bragton's company, only with, start construction.
So, we need to be able to include that in our building site plan?
If they take an offer.
Right.
Again, too.
There's, that's correct, and they have other plans.
Sure, the lawyer being.
Oh, uh, there's a, a fellow, there's a UPS, there's a UPS.
I do try to give you two words.
It's business, it's business.
Lisa.
Do we need to sign?
Do you need to sign?
Yes. Okay, come on back. All right, we, we had discussion, is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion on that, um, all right, then, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, so, uh, all, all are in favor on that, that, that one, okay. Now, Mr. Hartman, we need to, uh, follow up a little bit on our strategic plan, and Mr. Hartman has had, uh, discussions with Ms. Barbara Sanders, school board attorney.
We have a interesting additional, call it negotiating point here, one of the concerns that we've had with relooking city hall is how we're dealing with the Nest, we've had negotiation back and forth with the school board, um, I've been talking to Barbara Sanders on that, back and forth, something's popped up with the school board, and I just wanted to make everybody aware of it, and obviously, we can talk about this at our city meetings, so we'll talk about it again, but it's that the school board has, well, the school board attorney has asked that, I broached the subject of them, you know, they've been looking for a bus barn, they would be interested in having us deed them back the gym property, so that the gym, they said, they looked into renovating the gym, making some changes to the gym over here, um, and using it as a bus barn, parking lot and bus barn, and they want, they would like that deeded back to them, and they are looking at it in a vacuum, they're looking at it as unrelated to anything else that we're negotiating and doing, I, I advise the Sanders that, of course, we don't look at it that way, we look at it as all part of. We look at it as all part of a big pot that we're trying to figure out, whether the, the Nest, now the gym, field house renovations, where does the Nest go? The bay building, the bus barn, I'm sorry, the, you know, bay building or, or the field house, and that sort of thing. But I wanted to bring it to your all's attention. Obviously, we'll be talking to her in the work about it, but I told her that I would talk to the commission, we got a special media day, and we're going to talk to y'all about it. And really, she understands what, what I'm saying at first, but she did want me to, um, ask, and I said, I can't recommend that, but that would be, I guess, number one, willing to consider leaving them back the gym property. And second, taking a deal with that separately from everything else. Obviously, the first part, I would, you know, I'd, I'd say it's absolutely, everything's Donald Trump. But everything's negotiable.
They'll need it back to them, and they'll take care of the Nest.
That, that sort of thing is, give some thought to this. They, they may, they may, because she didn't foreclose anything, she just, again, they're, they come at it from one, one end, and we're here, we should try to meet in the middle, and now we have more to consider. We talked about a couple of other issues, which was, she had said if the school board comes back over here and has an active presence there as a bus barn, that they would take back over and install the leased area, um, which is something. Of course, I mentioned that we include the leased area as our laydown facility for disaster recovery, and we haven't currently used, but we wouldn't if we moved, use this parking lot, we have a shared parking agreement in the parking lot for the lease and Camp Lord Johnson. So we have a lot of Nest and the bus barn, you know, we have a lot of issues, which is, from a lawyer's perspective, good to negotiate on and try to reach a solution that we're both okay with. And now, basically, yeah, we have something that they, they would like to have some, you know, value, so. But it benefits us as well, because we, we talked about tearing down and all that. So it's, it's worth talking about and moving on. We do need to, I mean, if we're moving forward in one direction or another on the City Hall, we need to deal with the Nest.
And, uh, Mike, uh, I talked with Dan earlier about several topics. Many times we, we reviewed before the meeting, so we, we talked about it. And he mentioned that, and I was exactly like you right off, you know. And then I, I thought about it a couple of minutes. And, um, the parking lot out there, it's a lot of building. We know now it would probably be two hundred thousand dollars to resurface that lot. Uh, the, the gym building is, is a lot of, a lot of, too much.
What else is there?
Camp Lord Johnson looked at it, uh, looked at it a few years ago to repair it, four hundred and fifty thousand. So, um, it's, it's a, a hard haul, it really is. I mean, I, I hate to, I just don't know, I don't know what to say about it.
Speak genderous, give it all back to them.
Well, you try that, and they won't take, make it up.
Yeah, we'll include that, the whole building on it.
They can have it all.
Uh, yeah, I'll tell them they can't have that unless they take this.
Yeah, take it all, they can get it all.
Throw the school business in, we'll go give it to them.
We'll all do it. I can mention that, I mean, I'll mention all kinds of things that we can do.
Good, need a whole thing.
We got a lot more, we got a lot, we got a lot more to talk about.
It's good.
It's free. Who would turn down free property, free building? It's free. We took it. Ladies gotta take it back.
They'd offer them that, and that way they know that the door is closed. I guess, I'll ask y'all.
Just give them a little hoop to take.
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I'd like to remember back is what, what I would choose to say, say, yeah, we're open to, um, carving out the gym. The parking lot was already carved out. But we're, we're open to carve out the gym, but we have to reach an agreement on the Nest and laydown area, and it's the parking issue. We have to reach an agreement on everything. So they understand it is called mine.
Are they, uh, aware that we're, you know, well, at that point, when you talked to them, you had not signed contract, or they aware that we were seriously looking at contract? Were you signed when you talked to them?
They're aware, um, they were aware that we are, no more aware than normal, but, but we are moving.
Okay.
They know we are moving.
All right.
It's just, we didn't put it back in there. They know.
I would rather give the whole thing back.
You're talking about this, this site as well, and, and Commissioner Mathis has talked to them about that, and they said, no, but maybe they, maybe they'll reconsider.
Now that they want to.
Well, they said if we would demolition it, they'd take the property away.
Yeah, that's true. We could sell since they were buying it.
It'd be gone.
They had it.
It'd be gone like that.
Okay, then, um, do we want to direct Dan to, um, go back to, do we need a motion or just direct you to go back to Ms., uh, Ms. Sanders and tell her that, uh, we're open to that, they, if they would reconsider taking the school building and the, and the gym?
Okay, yeah.
Now, y'all noticed that I didn't mention the bus barn?
I actually do, do mention it, meaning, does it include it or not?
I don't know, I'll, I'll let the commission decide.
Take it all, that's what we got.
Literally give it back.
Yeah. Girls' football field. First, they own that already.
Then they'll come back.
Yeah, well, this is, this will jump in.
Well, you know what, if we wouldn't, if we wouldn't throw the, um, the old shop and remanaging flats down there, if we didn't throw that in, the city could use them as storage or something if we needed to. Because mainly, they really want the, they need a bus barn. Because the one in Applewood is full of black mold, and they can't stand it.
We got something.
But you're probably proud of the great deal.
The baby.
Yeah, and that, uh, we had discussed, uh, to remodel the classrooms back there, not, not whole bunch, but to, you know, to, um, do some repairs, the air conditioning, we, we're breaking that part back there. Uh, there's a ceiling, and there's, and the classroom porch, and even the vans, and to put the Nest back there. And then just, uh, take the power out and shut, shut it back.
And if we give them, if we give them all that stuff back to the building, it's their problem.
Uh, that would be part of, if, if, did you hear Commissioner Massing?
I'm sorry.
You gonna put that in, that if we give them the gym and all, then the Nest is gonna be their problem, right?
Nest goes, yeah, goes with this property. Yeah, I'll make sure that's crystal clear.
I don't understand how they get the grant to maintain that, we've got to take care of it.
It was this, it was signed, it was a, a signed agreement back in two thousand and eight. All right, is there any more discussion on this item? So, Ms. Courtney, you will be contacting the CC Land Company. Uh, and then, maybe you'll, uh, have some type of an answer from them by our next meeting, May fourth. And so we'll have this back on this, the agenda on May the fourth. I, and then we'll just, we'll just build forward from there. Maybe we need to try to look at finding, um, submit a questionnaire to the staff, see what they, what their needs are, let's, let's try to see if we can find a floor plan online that saves us some money, or look at soft choppy floor plan. Now, uh, the administrator in Mexico Beach said they did have a floor plan at one time, a likely, say, similar to soft choppy, and they wanted to have revisions done to, likely would need to, and the architect is going to charge eighty thousand to do that. So we know, and the architect that came here to, uh, that did the FWC building, he was going to charge revisions to, so, for revisions. So if we can find something that is, that would save, that would save us, you know, over a hundred thousand, probably a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty, if we were able to find.
Do you find that we want the soft choppy city though?
Uh, we might be able to get those floor plans, but they need a little bit of-
I don't understand.
And the, the thing is-
And this needs to be, it needs to be changed, and we can't use it the way it is.
It needs, uh, just a little extra space, and, uh, but it is T-shaped. So if, Mike, if we were able to, works out if we were able to abandon the alley, we'd definitely get that, that floor plan, if you can approach on the property line. Is there any more discussion on this topic for now? Okay, and we're going to move on to, uh, item two. Uh, discussion and possible action concerning the lease termination for GUSC. And, uh, uh, Ms. Courtney sent him the revised, uh, lease, uh, termination agreement, and have you heard from Mr. McCormick?
No, I haven't.
Have not heard from Mr. McCormick? All right, um, I would suggest then that we table this, uh, this discussion until the May fourth, uh, commission meeting. And, um, has anyone, have you talked with, so you haven't heard from him at all, you said?
I got an email from, I sent him the lease termination, I got an email back, he said he was going to forward it to his lawyer, and he let us know, that's the last.
And have you heard anything?
I have not heard anything from him.
I talked with him, he's expecting us to do it.
Do what?
Stand the lease termination, that's what we're talking about it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so, um, can you tell me how that would work, please, Mr. Hartman?
Um, actually, move right on, we're interested in it. We can certainly sign it and send it to him, so it's signed by us. But we have, we, the city commission, the way I'm, correct what I mean, the city commission has said, hey, we're, we're comfortable signing that. So if that, if he's waiting on us to sign it, I understand, we're kind of playing doubles in all the paths between us here, is we can sign it, send it to him, and then it's up to him. We still need to say something, but he can sign it and send it back to us. If that's all it needs, then I don't recommend we sign it and send it to him.
Uh, there was a misunderstanding, uh, then the directive last, at the, at the actual meeting-
Yes.
Was to send that to Mr. McCormick and ask for his signature, and then, and with the, uh, indications that we would sign it once, once he signed it. But we can, if y'all agree, we can sign it, we can come in tomorrow and, and sign it, and Courtney can send it on to him. Y'all fine to do that?
Uh, if I speak here, then we can, otherwise, so.
Yeah, we were just waiting on his signature.
Uh-huh. So what, how does that seem, Mr. Hartman?
That's fine, because, I mean, we, we had sent it to him, because if he had any problems with it, wanted revisions, that sort of thing, we could make them or not make them, look at it. If he's comfortable with the way it is, then obviously you can sign it, send it to him, and you can sign it. Close that chapter.
Do we have it where the commissioners can sign that, uh, today, before they leave?
Yeah, I'll print it, I'll send it to Courtney for a print.
Okay, are y'all in agreement to sign that, uh, lease termination, uh, agreement today, so that we can move that forward? Does everyone agree? Uh, Mr. Hartman, do we need a motion that we're going to sign that lease agreement today?
I, I think we, in, there is recollection, but I think we offer us execution of that at the last meeting, but another motion wouldn't hurt, but-
Okay, well, let's have a motion that we will sign that lease termination agreement with GUSC this afternoon.
I will make the motion to sign the lease agreement with, uh, G, GUSC, according to 2017.
All right, that's a good motion. So we have a, a, a motion by Commissioner Massie, a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any more discussion? Okay, any all in favor?
Aye.
Um, any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. There's one more, uh, new business, and this is on here. Uh, discussion and possible action concerning supplemental project application for the Restore Act multi-year implementation plan. And I ask for this to be on here because I, I set up Restore Act committee, uh, meeting, and, uh, Restore Advisory Committee. And at the last meeting, last week, uh, Allen Pierce announced that, uh, uh, there's going to be a required application workshop, and it's tentatively scheduled for the first week of May. And that workshop may happen before we have our commission meeting, May the fourth. And the, uh, I sent the, my detailed notes to Courtney Tamara, Russell, and Leslie Cox, because Tamara and Leslie are interested in this as well. And, uh, I sent to Russell because he's our engineer, uh, the, the, uh, and then I also sent the draft project submission, submission guidance document and the draft application of, uh, for the M one, for the multi-year implementation plan. These are those two documents, and they're, they are detailed and complicated. And, uh, every scoring criteria that you, that you have on here is going to require a two-hundred-and-fifty-word narrative. And so, if you, and if it's something that's going to protect the environment or natural resources, it's going to require references on the best available science. So it's going to take somebody who can complete an, uh, doing an application like that. And I know I can't do that. Uh, and, and it would be difficult for staff, and we'd have to have, you know, they spend a lot of time on it. Uh, the, uh, the scoring criteria is tricky. Uh, the indications are, and I've been, uh, on this, uh, committee now for off and on, we've had meetings for over three years, that all the indications are that, um, there's going to be very few projects approved in the multi-year implementation plan that's submitted to Treasury, because the county has to, to be responsible for procurement of all the federal funds. Uh, if, and everyone who receives a grant is going to have to have demonstrated experience with handling federal grants. And so if people get, uh, small projects approved that aren't experiencing federal grants, the county will have to manage that, they're only going to pay three percent administrative fee, and that's just not going to pay them to manage the small grants. The only multi-year implementation plan so far that has been approved by the West Treasury are project plans for one or two projects. Where, the indications are, one project's going to go on the plan. And if any other projects go on the plan, it's probably going to be one from Appalachia, one from Carabel, and then the county's project. Board of County Commissioners, uh, uh, it's going to, they approve everything. This is just an advisory committee. So I'm bringing back the information to you. I think that we need to send Russell to that workshop that's required. If you don't attend the workshop, you cannot make the application. And I won't be allowed to submit an application. I think Russell needs to go to that workshop, so he, at least he can be allowed to submit an application. He can listen to all the criteria, uh, if you have funding, leverage funding, uh, you know, there's certain criteria that will give you more scoring points, and he can, he can review that, review these applications, and come back and let us know what will be the project of our capital improvements that will fit best, that would have the most opportunity to get funded. And if there's other projects, uh, Courtney had mentioned about the Sonata property, purchasing that, building dogs. If there's some project like that, that you all think, we, this is coming on now, fifteen years, every, every year, a project will be submitted. The county commission most likely will not approve the project that caught up and tells the Army Corps of Engineers permitting, because that takes two to three years. If you have that Army Corps permitting already in hand, then that project might have, it would have a better opportunity. If your permitting's already in hand, you're going to have a better opportunity of being awarded a grant. They want stuff to shovel ready. So, um, if you, if you have a project like the working waterfronts, you need to start working on that now and acquiring the land. You have to acquire the land, it's not really going to be, you know, approved, because they want some of these projects ready. Acquire the land, uh, get your, uh, plans, your drawing, your conceptual, get your permitting, and you have to get all of these things that are making the shovel ready. And, uh, Russell can listen at the, at the, uh, meeting and come back and report to us if you have something that's shovel ready. I hate to miss out on the opportunity. If they do afford Appalachia, I want to make sure that we've got one in there as well. Uh, and there's always the next fourteen years after that, and we need to start thinking in advance, and what, you know, and planning in advance what we want to send.
Well, I make a motion for the board, for the city to send Russell to the training.
Okay, all right. And it's just one, it's just going to be a one, two-hour workshop.
And all of us go and work there?
Uh, and all of us can go, every one of us. And I would suggest that, you know, whoever's interested in that, please go, so that you can learn and you can understand, and, uh, you know, you'll have a, they, they definitely tell it like it is, Allen Pierce, that he will let you know, uh, really, what's, what's going on. The county commission has to approve everything. So it's not, it's not up to me or the committee, I'm just trying to report back to you, and I'm trying to, to give you the reality on- back to you, and I'm trying to, to give you the reality on the right, except to the county commission. So, uh, we have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Massie, to send, uh, Russell to the workshop, uh, or Molly, whoever can go, I would prefer Russell to, okay, and do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, a second back Commissioner Walden, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, and that's it, uh, uh, maybe we have a, is there any other discussion? All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, okay, uh, a motion back Commissioner Allen, second back Commissioner Mathis, all, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries, all right?
Let's do it again, so that they can see.